I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have died in our community during the past week, especially my father, Bob McGough Sr. Thank you.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Loscom.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. McGough.
Here. Dispense with the reading and minutes.
Third order, 3A, minutes of the regular meeting of the Scranton Housing Authority held on April 7, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, audit status from Robert Rossi and Company, received May 8, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Are there any clerks' notes?
No, Mr. McGough.
Thank you. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Mr. McGough, I have a few. Of course, I'd like to mention that Saturday will be the Armed Forces Day Parade. I would encourage everyone to come downtown and support our veterans. Also, the Ladies Ancient Order of Iberians will hold a guest bartender event Monday, May 19th, from 6 to 9 at the Parker House. Thank you.
I have one as well. There will be a Polish Food Festival, Sunday, May 18th, from noon to 6, sponsored by Stanislaw's Elementary School. They'll be again from noon to 6, and that's at 5:30 East Elm Street over in Southside.
Loscom, Mr. Gahn. I would like to mention that this weekend at Montage Mountain is the, I think it's the third annual Celtic festival. Entertainment, food, vendors, and it's not only for those of Celtic descent. It's a good time, encourage people to go. I think it's a $10 charge for entry, and it's around where the water park is located. I've attended the last two years. It's a very nice event. That's Celtic Festival this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Also, did want to mention that this Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, is the primary election, May 22nd, or 20th.
20th.
May 20th, sorry. May 20th, primary election. Unlike other primary elections, because of the referendum question on county government, all eligible voters may vote in the primary election. Now, you can't vote for candidates, but you are eligible to vote on the referendum question. That's important because in many cases, independent voters or some smaller third parties, if you're registered in that way, you are not, you can't vote in the primary. But it's important to note. This is an important event for Lackawanna County. The future of the county hinges on this vote, and all people should make an effort to vote in this primary and on this referendum question. And also, on tonight's agenda, item 6B, C and D, if voted in the affirmative, there will be a motion to move them to Seventh Order. As was explained last week, there is some timeliness to moving this to Seventh Order. If anyone wishes to speak to that, to either, to any of those, those pieces of legislation or to the move to Seventh Order, please do so during citizens' participation. And that is all I have.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan, before, just don't start the time. I didn't, I had a note and I forgot to mention it. City Hall will be closed Tuesday, May 20th because of the primary election. However, DPW is working on the 20th, so refuse pickup should be on time, but City Hall itself will be closed on the 20th. And also, for 5C on the agenda, there will be a motion to table that if it is passed in Fifth Order. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Joan Hodewannas, city resident. I'd like to begin, Mr. McGough, by offering my condolences on the loss of your father.
Thank you very much.
I read his beautiful obituary. I understand he was a veteran of WWII, and you and your family must have been very proud of him.
Yes, we are.
So I'll see you on the parade route on Saturday. Do we have any information on whether or not Mr. Amarosa is planning another briefing to the general public and maybe in the form of a caucus?
I do not have any specific information. I know that he did meet with members of the administration during this past week, but I was unable to attend, so I don't know if there is any specific date set for a further presentation. If, I have been asked that, and I would, I would assume that when there is a final draft or a final proposal, that we will, I'll say insist that there be a public disclosure. Mr. Gahn, did you want?
No, I was just going to say maybe we could, Mrs. Reed, if you would send or ask tomorrow what the, if they are intending on having.
Yes, I'll find out then. I was unable to.
Does this contract end at the end of June with the Chairman of Commerce? Is it the end of June that his six months are up?
It was a six-month contract, so I'm assuming yes.
Okay. My only other item is, I noticed in the background papers in the clerk's office, Ross St. Company's audit status report for May, and looking back at the one for April, where there were 28 outstanding items, it's now gone down to 26 outstanding items, which is progress, but I fear that we're not going to make the May 31st deadline for completing that audit. So I think it's something that, you know, I'm not saying pressure, but continually checking with the administration on why there might be backlogs in some of these areas, so that audit can pop at a, you know, more useful date.
I will say, I, one of the, one of the problems has been the, I'll say, lack of staffing that have, we've tried to supplement to move the process forward.
All right. You know, I've often wondered, maybe I shouldn't say this, but since the city has such a large population of retirees, many of them who are, you know, educated professionals in various areas, I wonder why we don't, we don't seek volunteers to help out in some of the municipal tasks that we have before us, you know, if staffing is a problem. You might find that you have people with the qualifications who would be happy to offer their talents, their time and their talents, now that they're retired. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hetman.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Gerard Hetman, from Lackawanna County's Community Relations Department. Good to see you as always. To begin this evening, I would like to announce an event that for this year will be in its second year of operation. It's an event that our department started last year, aimed at filling a need in our community, and it's backed by popular demand again this year. That would be our second annual Lackawanna County Job Fair. The Job Fair this year takes place on Thursday afternoon, June 12th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at PNC Field in Musick. The Job Fair will follow a similar format to what we had last year, in that we'll have approximately 60 private sector employers from in and around Lackawanna County exhibiting at PNC Field on the upper concourse of the suite level, and the public is welcome to come during those hours, again, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 12th, speak to all the employers present, and see what type of opportunities are available for those employers. We do ask all the employers in attendance to bring information on all of the employment positions they have available, full-time positions, of course, but also part-time, seasonal and internship opportunities. So we welcome not just individuals seeking full-time employment, but also maybe students or retirees who may be looking for seasonal or part-time work, as well as students seeking internships at the start of the summer. It's a good opportunity for anyone looking, for any one of those types of positions, to attend and speak to a broad variety of employers across a variety of different industries in our area. Last year, we had several thousand people attend. In fact, we probably lost track because there were so many folks coming through the door from all walks of life. So everyone is welcomed, all ages, all skill sets and abilities. Please come out to the Job Fair on Thursday, June 12th. And we thank anyone for spreading the word. We know that when we do these events, you know, this helps in everything else we do, but person-to-person networking is important in getting the word out there to help fill these needs. So we thank everyone who helps to spread the word on those events. Secondly, on the topic of infrastructure for just a moment, the Lackawanna County Rail Authority Bridge, that spans the bottom of Market Street, coming down the hill one direction from Rehmridge Corners and down the hill the other way from Providence Square, will undergo some maintenance and upkeep work this coming week, from Monday, May 19th through Friday, May 23rd. The work will take place beginning at 8:00 a.m. each day, and it should wrap up at approximately 1:30 p.m. each afternoon. The Rail Authority has informed us that most of the work due to the design of the bridge will take place Wednesday through Friday of this coming week. We have reached out to the Scranton Police Department and spoken to Chief Graziano regarding any possible traffic disruptions. The chief has assured us that he will send officers to check on the work beginning of each workday, and the department will provide some cones and barriers, or if necessary, will station an officer there to ensure as less of a disruption of traffic as possible. The crews don't anticipate a major problem, but the police department has reached out to us and said they're willing to help direct traffic, to keep things safe for work crews, pedestrians and motorists, and again, minimize any traffic disruptions that may result, as a result of the repairs. And then just two brief housekeeping items. First, the Lackawanna County Wireless Initiative continues to take shape in a variety of different sectors and walks of life in Lackawanna County. One of those is helping to improve our recreation and quality of life programs. On that note, McDade Park in Scranton now has free accessible wireless internet access for visitors to the park. So if you bring your cellphone, your laptop, you can log into wireless internet provided by the Lackawanna County Department of Information Technology at McDade Park. We do also have the same service right now at Merely Saransky and Ilesworth Park. Covington Park will be coming online soon. We've had it on Courthouse Square for quite some time and in the courthouse. So again, we know a lot of folks from the city like to come to McDade Park in the summer, and it's a good resource to use while they're there for work, study, any other pursuits that they may pursue. And also, we'd like to thank, on behalf of the Commissioners, the Scranton Police Department, for two of the officers who attended our Bike Safety Fair that we spoke about last month, and that was held in late April at McDade Park. That would be Lieutenant Lertumeka and Patrolman Tony Gueda. I'm sorry if I got the names there, but those two officers were in attendance at our Bike Safety Fair. They were tremendous help in making sure all the children that attended received a bike helmet that fit them properly and that they knew how to wear it properly. They also provided several bicycle safety demonstrations on how to properly ride and maintain children's bikes during the summer months. We had a great turnout there on Mr. Loscom. We thank the officers under the Public Safety Wing for attending. They were a great help to us. And last but not least, Mr. Wexler mentioned the parade already. We thank you for talking about that, all of you, and I hope to see each of you and many others out at the parade route this, this coming weekend. We've worked over the last few years with the parade committee to try to boost the events, attendance and participation, and we've made some good gains. We hope the parade continues to grow and prosper with all of our work. Hopefully, that'll happen. So, thank you as always, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hetman. Elizabeth Davis.
Good evening.
As I said, my name's Elizabeth Davis. I'm here representing the Scranton Public Library, and we're here to invite the community and all of you to our annual block party and fundraiser, Swinging on Vine, which will be held on Friday, May 23rd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. For $15 in advance and $20 at the door, you'll get three hours of food, drinks, chances to win amazing raffle prizes, and live music from Paul LaBelle and The Exact Change. All prizes and food were graciously donated by community and local businesses, and we're especially excited to feature our southwest menu, thanks to the Lackawanna College's Culinary Arts Program. Proceeds from the Swinging on Vine benefit the Albury Memorial Library, the Nancy Gay Holmes Branch, Library Express, and the Lackawanna County Children's Library, so that we may continue to provide the highest quality collections and services to the community. Some of our services range from storytimes for young children, which are really important for early learning skills. We have free online tutoring for school-aged students through high school and elementary school, as well as job and career development services such as resume writing, computer classes, and other developmental skills. We also want to note that the library is under some renovation, which is being funded by Keystone Grant, which we'd like to thank the city for helping us apply for and receiving. You'll note that the building is covered in scaffolding and dust is everywhere, but we are open, and we hope everyone comes to the event on the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to offer my condolences to Mr. McGough with the loss of his father.
Thank you.
He was a WWII flyer, and both Mr. McGough and he are lucky to be here, because there was 200,000 flyers on both sides, Axis and Allied, lost. That was the death toll of WWII. 200,000, four Vietnams. Now, I've mentioned a few weeks ago on paving, and I'm glad to see that a lot of it is done, but thought occurred to me, why there's no coordination beforehand, and I've wondered if I had a company, maybe I own the gas company, and somebody else at the water company had to do work. If I ran in there and did the pay my repairs at the same time, I have a slight suspicion that maybe I'd be asked to chip in towards the repairs, and that's why they don't, all don't get coordinated. I was just wondering about that, and it's just food for thought. And I also mentioned on delinquent trash fees, and certainly, I don't know how far back it can go, but for this year, anyone being delinquent that has the ability to pay is totally unacceptable. I just paid mine, so, in full. I don't need to forget it later, whatever, and then, one day I came down a few years ago and forgot my checkbook, so I couldn't pay it. Well, then the next day, somebody's in my face saying, "Well, now you're going to have to pay the light fee." I was like, "Ugh." And I'd like to see something discussed with this, that some, someday, at the end of this year, if somebody's indelinquent, we have to start collecting on it. It's not acceptable to keep raising it up, and certainly, I can see that this council and this mayor has had everything dropped in their lap, and there wasn't a lot of cooperation from the last several years, but there and again, some issues, like the parking authority. What do you do with somebody that won't answer your questions? I don't know. So, and I'd like to also mention, please get out and vote this year. If people know you're not going to vote, they don't have to be concerned about what you think. And on this audit, Joan put an idea in my head with staff. We do need more staff in the city, especially, we could have possibly even have our own collections and so forth, where, you know, you call up and, "Hey, do you know you're two months late or three months late with your fees or whatever? What's the problem?" And try and prod people to start contributing that really should. Sometimes it's somebody living on $850 a month on Social Security, and sometimes it's people living on $150,000 and they want gas for their motorboat or something. So, that's not acceptable. I just assumed, see, the lean put against the house and left to ride until the house was sold, but if they don't have the ability to pay, but somebody that does have the ability to pay has no business taking advantage year in and year out of that. And hopefully, the audit will be a little more timely, because the last several years, it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. It wasn't even at budget time. It wasn't even available. And, okay, I can't let this one go. Jenny Beth Martin, Tea Party darling, 400 grand a year. Good work, Jenny. She only contributes 5% of the money she takes into Tea Party candidates, which won't break my heart, if they don't win the election. Thank you and have a good night. Don't forget to bok bok.
Thank you.
Mr. Hetman. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council?
Good evening, council. Marie Schumacher, city resident and taxpayer. I do plan to get finally to my blight abatement, even though I have other things. This has been on hold too long, but I want to start tonight with something that's been stuck in my craw since two weeks ago, which is the vote on the PFM contract. I would like to take a minute again to read Section 613 of the Administrative Code, and I would like someone to explain if, first of all, state whether you believe your vote was legal, and two, how it complies with this section of the Administrative Code, and perhaps Mr. Menora could provide his counsel. It says, "No money shall be paid out of the city treasury except upon appropriation previously made by council and upon warrant pursuant thereto, which warrant shall explicitly state the purpose for which the money is to be drawn. No work shall be hired to be done, no materials purchased, no contracts made, and no order issued for the payment of any monies in any amount which will cause the sums appropriated to be, to specific purposes to be exceeded. Council may make supplemental appropriations for any lawful purpose from funds on hand or estimated to be received within the fiscal year and not appropriated to any other purpose. Such supplemental appropriations shall be considered by council as an ordinance amending the annual budget. The business administrator shall have the power to authorize the transfer of any unexpected balance of any appropriation item or any portion thereof within a department, but if it is between departments, then the business administrator shall make such transfer with the approval of council." There was no appropriation, there was no budget, and yet, you all voted, all five of you, voted to approve this contract. Now, please tell me if you really believe that is legal and in compliance with the Administrative Code.
Do you want a response at this time?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, I do.
And does Mr. Menora agree with that, if you'd ask him?
You're asking.
Yes, I'm asking both of you, actually. Yes. Okay.
I will answer, because I'm the one that voted.
You, all five of you voted for it.
I understand that.
Okay. Then the Administrative Code is not law, it is to be adhered to, it's just a menu from which people are allowed to pick and choose, is that?
Are you going to allow me to answer?
Yep.
Or are you?
Yep.
I've been trying to.
I believe that it was a legal vote, because the, any appropriation or any monies paid to PFM would be done so in 2015, therefore, there is no need for a budget item in 2014, since there was no budget item in 2014.
Well, two comments on that. Number one, it's not, there is no appropriation for it, and there's no guarantee of next year's, and the other is that the mayor had the opportunity to amend the budget, and as is explained in this code, you could have shifted money from someplace else, but you chose not to. So, on to blight. Very disappointed, I might add. Act 90 on blight abatement has been in existence since October 27th, 2010. 2010 was also the year the council then had a special session on blight, and I would like to know why we have not availed ourselves of any of the new powers. There were six new powers. The municipalities can take property owners to court to seek judgments against an owner's assets. Municipalities may deny permits to owners of buildings that are in code violation. Municipalities may deny permits to owners of buildings that are behind in taxes. Municipalities may deny permits to owners of buildings that are behind in other municipal accounts. Municipalities may deny these permits until all existing violations are remedied. Out-of-state property owners may be extradited back to Pennsylvania to be charged with property-related violations. We certainly have enough blight to go around, and I was very pleased, I did speak to this to prior councils, that one of the local municipalities finally enacted an ordinance to actually use this law. Now, why have we not used any of these powers?
Again, my answer would be that we have not had the staff to do so, that we have continually cut, we have continually cut staffing through the course of the past years, and that it's practically impossible to keep up with all of the ordinances and all of the fees and all of the other things that are going, that were the responsibility of City Hall.
I.
And you support most of those cuts, and that would be my answer.
Yes, I did support the cuts. We are in, I'll be back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. McGough. Today I had the opportunity to speak to Tom Lynch and Dennis Gallagher, and they were able to inform me that the repairs at Naug Park are going to be able to be made, so the problem at the park will be corrected at Naug, which is good news. To touch on the question about the audit, from working with Mr. Balzoni, there is a shortage of staff in the business administrator's office, and it's through no fault of anyone's else, but there are some people that are ill in that office. And part of the problem with bringing help in or assistance in from off the street is our computer system is quite antiquated, and it's kind of particular to our, to our situation here, so it's not as easy as, someone might have great accounting experience, but not with our system, and that's part of our problem, and we are in the process of upgrading it. So hopefully, as we move forward, things will move a little smoother. That's all I have tonight, Mr. McGough.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just a few very brief points. I would also like to extend my condolences to Councilman McGough and the loss of his father. And as a veteran, Mr. McGough's father, the Armed Forces Parade is this weekend at 11:00 a.m. downtown, and I know some others have mentioned it already. I look forward to attending the parade as I do every year, and I hope more people will. It is a little bit frustrating that when you go down for St. Patrick's Parade, which is another great event in the city, the streets are lined. You really, you literally can't walk a block during the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but we should have the, actually, better attendance for the Armed Forces Parade to honor our veterans. So I hope we'll have a good attendance this year. I encourage everyone to be downtown at 11:00 a.m. this, this Saturday, and I look forward to being at the parade. Also was mentioned, Tuesday, the 20th, is Election Day. It's a very important election that everyone gets out and votes. There are elections for governor, state senator, representative, lieutenant governor, and there's also a ballot question on the future of Lackawanna County government. And as noted, normally in a primary, only Democrats and Republicans could vote, but because of the ballot question, independents and third-party members can vote. So everyone can vote. can vote in this primary election. So, it's very important that everyone gets out and votes. And just one brief comment on a legislative matter on the agenda for this week. The SAPA legislation is up for a vote this week. I will vote yes to introduce it. As I've mentioned many times, I do have a lot of reservations about this legislation. But it will be, hopefully, introduced tonight. And at that point, we could hear input from other members of the community. I wouldn't want to vote against it in introduction because I do think that the residents have that right and all of our colleagues do as well. So, I will vote to introduce it. It then will be tabled for input from other agencies and other governmental bodies. And at that point, it'll be brought up again. So, that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGough. I too like to, would like to issue my condolences to you and your family and we keep you in our prayers. Tonight on five C, Mr. Rogan just mentioned it, we will be introducing SAPA. I will be looking at it again with fresh eyes, but I will vote to introduce it. And again, maybe some questions will be answered to, you know, change my mind from the last time. I'm looking forward to going, reviewing it again and hearing some fresh, fresh opinions. So, we will be, I will be voting to introduce that. As far as blight, as Mrs. Schumacher mentioned, Act Ninety, you know, we have been advocates for fighting against blight here for the past several years. And I do agree, we should use every tool available. We are under a new administration now. I think we will be looking at it a little harder moving forward. There are a couple issues. Again, it's staffing at this point. We did, you know, we have a few people that are out sick that are in some, some very important positions. And we have been pretty much focusing our efforts on getting our financial situation straight and, you know, much to the dismay of some of these other issues. But I do believe that, you know, working through OECD and different, different things, we will pursue the blight situation more in the future. But unfortunately, right now, it's more of a financial issue trying to get things straightened out here. And again, I hope everyone goes to the parade Saturday, the Veterans Parade. We wouldn't be here and have our right to vote if it wasn't for our veterans who fought for our freedom. So, please remember them on Saturday. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loskem.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I just have a few comments. First, I'd just echo the sentiments of my colleagues by saying very sorry for your loss on your father, Mr. McGough. Also, May nineteenth to May twenty-third, the DPW is scheduled to sweep streets in North Scranton from Lemon Street to Parker Street, including all avenues and streets. I would also like to echo my colleagues' comments about reminding people to vote this Tuesday, May twentieth, which is Election Day. It's very, very important that everyone gets out and vote. The last election, I think we had twenty-some percent of the population vote, which is, which I can't understand. Everyone needs to get out and vote. And I would just like to quote Abraham Lincoln. I saw this quote today and I thought it was funny and made a lot of sense. Our former president Abraham Lincoln said, "Elections belong to the people. It's their decision. If they decide to turn their back on the fire and burn their behinds, then they will just have to sit on their blisters." So, it's very, very important that everybody gets out and vote. Finally, the police department is conducting a parking study in the nine-hundred block of Prescott Avenue. I mentioned this last week, that the residents up there were having problems with the on-street parking. So, they are conducting, the police department's conducting that, conducting that study and we should get an answer by the end of next week. And I will be making the rest of my comments on item five C, which is the introduction of the SAPA plan. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to everyone for the condolences on the passing of my father. He certainly was of the greatest generation. And I would encourage anyone that knows of any of World War II vets or people who have lived through that experience to search them out and thank them. They are, and I've said it before, they are a true national treasure. These are people that lived through the Great Depression, through World War II, came back to this, you know, and raised families and have produced, you know, the country that we have. So, please, you know, as I said, go out and thank these people. They deserve it. One other, just brief item, somebody, Mr. Hetman, brought up about bicycle safety and all. As the weather improves, one of the things that we will see is a number of people riding bicycles and motorcycles. Please, as you're driving, please be careful and be aware. Most of, most accidents that occur with bicycles and motorcycles are, are caused by, or people say that they simply did not see them. So, just be aware that there will be more cycle traffic on the city streets and throughout, and please be careful. And that's all.
Five B for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, an ordinance entitled, "Amending File of the Council Number Twenty-two, two thousand and six," entitled, "Authorizing and Approving the Designation of Parking Spaces for Certain City of Scranton Personnel in and Along Dix Court, the Parking Area in the Rear of the City of Scranton Municipal Building, and a Parking Lot Along Mulberry Street Adjacent to Scranton Fire Headquarters, and Authorizing the City of Scranton Police Department to Enforce the Parking Designations as Reflected in the Attached Schematic by Adding an Additional Parking Space Behind Scranton Fire Headquarters and Redesigning Certain Parking Spaces to Reflect the Change in Which Some City of Scranton Personnel Currently Park as Reflected in the Attached Schematic."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction, a resolution. A resolution of the City of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, adopting a comprehensive plan.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
Yes, on the question. I would just like to make a few comments about SAPA. First, I would like to commend Mayor Courtrite and his administration for sending this legislation down to city council. In the past few months, I have made comments concerning our economic development plan for the city, among other things. I think SAPA, while not a fix-all for every problem that we have, is a definite step in the right direction and a blueprint that we can use for the future of this city. I just want to first mention a few important aspects of SAPA. The first thing, the SAPA plan shall not infringe on any lawful rights granted to any member municipality that said member retained prior to its participation in this association. All decisions relative to participating in this plan now and in the future are the sole dominion of the elected leadership of each member municipality. Each member community will continue to maintain its own zoning hearing board. Each member community reserves the right to withdraw from this SAPA plan at any time. And finally, the autonomy of each and every member community shall be permanently protected and maintained. I think those are important points because what I heard when SAPA came into the caucus was people were a little nervous that we wouldn't have a zoning board or the zoning board would carry no weight. That is not true. The zoning board still carries weight as does the planning commission. I know that SAPA had been brought up before council in two thousand and ten and since that time, I've heard many comments about it. Some comments always begin with, oh, you know, the Abingtons have something to do with this. Well, they must be up to something. This can't be good for Scranton. They probably just want to dump everything on us and keep their places immaculate. And that's the truth. That's what I've heard from various people throughout the city when this comes up. I think it's time we look past that mentality and see this plan for what it is. And that is a blueprint for the future of Scranton and one in which we work together with other municipalities for the betterment of this area. This plan is, as I said, not a quick fix for our problems, but it at least acknowledges the fact that Scranton should be the center of economic development in this area. There are three main reasons why I will be supporting this plan. Number one, increased opportunities for economic development. Number two, increased funding from the state. And finally, number three, opportunities to increase the tax base within the city. We have recently witnessed the departure of several significant businesses from the downtown. While the SAPA plan alone cannot prevent or halt this trend, the plan emphasizes the need to reduce sprawl and infill the city. The SAPA plan allows participating municipalities to share land use requirements, which means Scranton could better attract new or relocating businesses. The plan can give the city a way to facilitate economic development based on a coordinated and comprehensive strategy rather than every municipality competing for tax revenue, which is a huge problem in this area. SAPA puts a strong emphasis on Scranton being the center of economic development in the region. A healthy, vibrant urban center in Scranton is key to the overall vision of this plan. We also know that the city is in dire financial straits. Anything we can do to save money or create opportunities for new funding must be considered. If Scranton adopts this plan, if we as city council adopt this plan, we will be eligible for additional grant monies from the state and it also saves us from expending money on required planning updates. According to Cindy Campbell, the community planner from DCED, which is the Department of Community and Economic Development, communities that participate in a multi-municipal state plan receive priority consideration for grants from some state agencies. PennDOT, DCED, and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, among others, give priority consideration for grants to communities involved in comprehensive plans. Projects such as the Elm Street Project in South Scranton, the Main Street Project in the downtown, and the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority Trail Project would have a better chance of obtaining grants from the state. Should, should we as council reject this SAPA plan, we would then need to pursue our own comprehensive plan. In nineteen ninety-three, Scranton's single comprehensive plan cost approximately one hundred thousand dollars. The SAPA plan would replace the city's comprehensive plan, thereby avoiding the costs associated with updating or creating a new city plan. The only cost requirement for Scranton for implementation of the SAPA plan would be two hundred dollars a year for dues. Finally, the city has long needed to update their zoning ordinances. Adopting the SAPA plan would make us eligible for state funding to defray the costs of that update. Finally, SAPA offers a framework to increase our tax base. No one would disagree that we need more people and more businesses in the city if we are to continue to receive the same services without burdening those least able to afford it. Most of the targeted growth areas in the plan are in existing urban areas. By keeping rural areas more rural and urban areas more urban, it saves the Abingtons from spending money developing the infrastructure, infrastructure to support sprawl while attracting money to Scranton by directing businesses to where the infrastructure already exists. In closing, I strongly urge my fellow council members to support SAPA so that we may begin to take a step in the right direction. This plan provides a much-needed blueprint for the future. It allows us to work together towards a shared vision. It is a framework for the future of Scranton that anticipates and accommodates opportunities for focused growth in the city. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? It should be noted that there, as was indicated, this will probably be introduced and then there is, it will be tabled and there is a forty-five day waiting period before it can be put back on the agenda. During that waiting period, it would have to be reintroduced, I believe, into the planning commission and zoning and so on. So, there's plenty of opportunity for input from the community prior to another vote on, on whether we adopt SAPA or not. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
I would like to make a motion to table item five C until all public notifications can be made.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of tabling item five C signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Five D for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation of used commercial-grade stove, commercial-grade stainless steel sink in Work Island from Titan Tree Service presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department for installation at Fire Headquarters.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title, file of the council number eighteen, two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to enter into lease agreements with various Little League, Teenage League, Missy League, and Junior Football League associations for use of city-owned property in connection with approved Little League, Teenage League, Missy League, Farm League, T-Ball League, and Junior Football League activities for a three-year period commencing April fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, and ending April fourteen, two thousand and seventeen.
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item six A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Six B, reading by title, file of the council number nineteen, two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, PA Local Government Investment Trust, Pliget, entitled, "Pliget Capital Improvement Funds for Disbursement and Tracking of Those Funds for Capital Improvement Purposes."
You've heard reading by title of item six B. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item six B past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Six C, reading by title, file of the council number twenty, two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance, transferring funds from Fund Zero Six Capital Projects Cash, Pliget, two thousand and three bond, which funds and account are no longer needed for the conduct of city business and abolishing and closing said account and transferring the funds remaining in said account to a new special city account listed below.
You've heard reading by title of item six C. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item six C past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Six D, reading by title, file of the council number twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, Act Forty-seven Grant for the receipt and disbursement of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant, for financial aid under and by the authority of Municipalities' Financial Recovery Act, Act Forty-seven of nineteen eighty-seven as amended.
You've heard reading by title of item six D. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item six D past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move items six B, C, and six D to seventh order for final passage as was requested by the business administrator.
On the question, all those in favor of tabling, or, excuse me, of moving items six B, C, and D into seventh order for final consideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, formerly six B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number nineteen, two thousand and fourteen, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, PA Local Government Investment Trust, Pliget, entitled, "Pliget Capital Improvement Funds for Disbursement and Tracking of Those Funds for Capital Improvement Purposes."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loskem?
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, formerly 6-
Excuse me, just a clarification. I, I indicated during, prior to citizens' participation, that anyone that wished to speak on these could do so during citizens' participation.
But you have-
Thank you.
You have moved them, that's, I think that's illegal too, but-
7B, formerly 6C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the council number 20, 2014, transferring funds from Fund 06 Capital Projects Cash Pliget 2003 Bond, which funds and account are no longer needed for the conduct of city business, and abolishing and closing said account and transferring the funds remaining in said account to a new special city account listed below.
What is the recommendation for the chair on, or for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, formerly 6D, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file of the council number 21, 2014, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled Act 47 Grant for the receipt and dispersment of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant, for financial aid under and by the authority of Municipalities Financial Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987 as amended.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Needing is adjourned.